6:00 PM on January 8th, 2024, and I'd like to call the city council meeting to order. We'd like to begin by inviting Pastor Dees from Crosspoint Church to come forward for the invocation.
Let's everybody just take a moment, just to be still before the Lord, and just tell Him that you love Him. And if there's anything between you and your heavenly Father right now, just ask His forgiveness. And Lord, here we are. What a blessing to be in the first official city council meeting for this wonderful city, the first one of 2024. Thank you, Lord, for allowing us to be together, allowing this good group to meet. We thank you that the city has business that needs to be attended to, that folks have the opportunity to express their opinions, and that's what this country is all about. And, Lord, we thank you for this town. We thank for these leaders. It's not always easy to be a leader, and I pray that you give them strength and guidance in what they do. Lord, also, we thank you for our soldiers. We thank you for our firemen, our police, our first responders. Thank you for folks that are working in an emergency room in a hospital right now, all those folks that just, we just appreciate them so much. Ask your blessings upon them. Father, I pray that you would just smile over this place, and we just want you to know we thank you for this opportunity together to conduct good business. And we thank you for hearing our prayers. And we pray these things in the matchless name of Jesus Christ, our Lord and Savior. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor Dees, and we'd like to ask Cub Scout Troop 350 to come forward to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Can't hear him. We're gonna pick the mic. Lights back here, guys. Right here. Michael, go ahead.
Thank you, Scott. Thank you. Call card, please. Mayor Finley?
Here.
Councilmember Robleski?
Here.
Councilmember Spears?
Yes.
Councilmember Powell?
Here.
Councilmember Shaw?
Council President Bartlet?
Here.
Councilmember Denzine?
Yes.
Councilmember Seaford?
Here.
Do we have any amendments to the agenda this evening?
We do not.
Congratulations. Okay. Next, we have approval of minutes number 2023-24-RG. Move to approve. Motion second, any discussions? Ready for vote. Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Council President Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw?
Councilmember Denzine?
Yes.
Councilmember Seaford?
Aye.
And the motion passes. We have two presentations this evening. The first is the Madison Station Historic Preservation Society announcing the winners of the 2023 Madison Station Polar Express Christmas on Main. I'd like to ask Debbie Overcash to come forward.
All right, y'all, I've got a lot to cover, so I'm gonna read. I don't normally like to do this, but we've got a lot of people to thank, and so I want to make sure I don't miss anyone. First again, I'm Debbie Overcash, president of the Madison Station Historic Preservation Society. Thank you for giving us this time to recognize several wonderful holiday events in Madison. The Madison Station Historic Preservation Society is so pleased to partner with the city on both the Polar Express Christmas Tree Trail and the Christmas Capers. Thank you all. In addition, tonight I had the great honor of awarding the Madison Christmas Parade Awards. First, the fifth reenactment of a wonderful Madison Christmas tradition begun by Doc Hughes, the Christmas Capers, was held on Saturday, December 16th, on Main Street and saw our largest attendance to date. As usual, Walt and Larry Landerson were having a big time warming the crowd up atop Hughes' Drugstore, the site of the original capers. They kick off this one-of-a-kind event by throwing candy and moon pies to the crowd, then the chickens start flying. Thank you to Mayor Finley and Councilpersons Karen, Mara, and Teddy for joining the fun. Rumor has it, and pictorial evidence confirms, that Councilman Teddy was on the roof throwing chickens as well. In addition, our heartfelt thanks to the Madison City Community Orchestra for entertaining us with beautiful Christmas carols, to the Rotary Club of Madison for serving hot chocolate and cookies, to Todd Phillips, who each year volunteers his time and talent so that we can all hear. These fine folks have joined us the last five years for all the capers, and have committed to support in 2024 again. Thank you all. The combined value of the 20 chickens this year was over $3,300. A huge thank you to the very generous businesses that made this happen. Amy Thompson Dentistry, Belk, Champion's Chicken, City of Madison Parks and Rec, Elegance on Main, Filthy Gorgeous on Main, The Flower Shop of Providence, Heritage Florist, Huntsville International Airport, Kathleen's Bridle, Lemon and Lavender, Madison Family Dentistry, Madison Station Antiques, Madison Title &amp; Clothing, Main Street Cafe, Murphy Homes, Noble Passage, Opie Balch Realty, Pat Glenn Legend Realty, Studio 106, Tom Brown's Restaurant, Yellow Hammer Brewery, and Zion Popcorn. We're looking forward to the 2024 Capers and hope you will all join us and bring your friends. Next, the night the 2023 Madison Polar Express Christmas Tree Trail was lit by Mayor Finley on the evening of Friday, December 1st. With 68 stunningly beautiful trees, this was our largest trail to date. Again, the Historical Society is always happy to partner with the city of Madison, who brought Santa in from the North Pole. Thank you all. For the evening, the Rotary Club of Madison, who again served hot chocolate and cookies, to Sandy Weisner and our Madison Community Orchestra for once again providing beautiful Christmas carols, to Madison Visionary Partners, who too turned the pedestrian walkway into a fantastic wintery snowy wonderland, to the Madison Chamber of Commerce for lively children's lightstick parade and much-loved letters to Santa, to the Madison Arts Alliance for their creative ornament decorating opportunity, to our Madison Public Library for their very animated reading of the Polar Express, to Lisa Thomas and her staff in the City Court's office for keeping the money straight, and last, but certainly not least, to Kelly Johnson and our very own Madison Parks and Rec Department. Without them, this magic would not happen. From the bottom of my heart, we thank you all. Mayor Finley, will you join us? Our judges had quite the time this year. Every tree was so beautiful. Tonight, we are pleased to announce the winning trees for 2023. When the award is announced, if the representatives of each group will join Mayor Finley down front, we'd love to thank you and get a picture. And I brought my photographer, so where's Tommy Overcash?
Judy's at the phone.
Other duties have a phone. Are Pam and Brady Rogers in the audience? Pam and Brady are always there doing a beautiful job. Congratulations to the American Legion Post 229 and Auxiliary Post 229. They are the winners of the Madison Choice Awards. Congratulations. It was a beautiful tree. Thank you all. To Jessica Harrison, the audience. Jessica, The Flower Shop of Providence is the winner of the 2023 Mary and Bright Showstopper Award. Congratulations, Jessica. Is Tara Bailey and Heather Morgan, are y'all in the audience? There we go. I vote Madison is the winner of the 2023 Holly Jolly Most Holiday Inspired Award. Congratulations to our 2023 winners, and thanks to all 68 participating individuals, nonprofits, and businesses for helping to make our Madison Main Street truly a destination in 2023. The 2023 Parks and Rec-led Madison Christmas Parade, Santa's Workshop, had to be rescheduled to Sunday, December 10th, due to very bad weather on Saturday, but it went off without a hitch on Saturday, with 30 groups and organizations participating in the parade. The winning entries are here with us this evening. If a representative or representatives of each group would please join Mayor Finley when your organization is called, thank you. The Girl Scouts of North Central Alabama Service Unit 212, please join us. Good job, girls. Oh, wow, this is wonderful. Y'all, everybody crowd in. We want a great picture. Good job. So the winner of the Mary and Bright Award goes to Girl Scouts of North Central Alabama Service Unit 212. Congratulations, guys. Do we have a representative from Madison Mission Pathfinders and Adventurers? Madison Mission Pathfinders and Adventurers is the winner of the Holly Jolly Award this year. And last, but certainly not least, is there anybody from Cub Scout Pack 350? Thank you.
Next, we have public comments. Public comments are limited to three minutes per speaker. We ask that you state your name and your district when you come forward, and we will begin with those who have submitted a comment card. The first comment card that was submitted was from Judy Miller.
Thought I got five minutes.
Three minutes.
My name is Judy Miller. I do live here in Madison. Thanks to Mr. Smith, I'm gonna come once a month to the meetings for two reasons. Number one, I love my city, and I care very much about myself. I need more help than I'm getting from the city of Madison. I have contacted Dale Strong's office, talked a long time to one of his staff members. She sent me a form to fill out with suggestions and problems I was having, not just I, but everybody in my apartment complex. This is at the Dublin Village. Since I was here last, we do have streetlights now, thanks to Mr. Smith. So things are not, things are just, one of the things I want to ask before I run out of time. I am legally handicapped. I am deaf in both ears, I'm blind in the left ear. We make handicap ramps and easy open doors for people that are handicapped. Not many people need them, but for those that do, you've got to use them. I need you to use this mic. I noticed last week mostly you never moved them down close to your face. Please do that. So far, I've heard nothing. I want to address today, the dirty streets. Mr. Smith told me you clean them every three times a year. That's not enough. If it's been done once a month, it's not enough, or three times, because I walk everywhere I go now. I no longer drive. There is a big large orange and white traffic barrel on the sidewalk in front of the Zack Bee, which blocks the sidewalk. I only have a little bit of sidewalk, and that needs to be removed. Mr. Strong asked me, how do I rate Madison County for senior citizens? You can pretty well guess, I gave him a really low mark. One of the problems is transportation. The Mars Bus takes you to your doctor's office, period. There's no other place in Madison County that I'm aware of that makes any kind of reduced rate or special service for senior citizens. And there are a few of us here, you know, and all that's not there yet, you're getting there. I'm 84. It's coming to you someday. Hold on. That's really all I have today. I do appreciate your time, and if you make an effort so I can hear you. So far, I've heard nothing. I would like to hear some of what I come here for. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. The next person who submitted a comment card is Bob Peters.
Mayor, and city councilors, I handed you out a information piece on Global Ties U.S., and I would ask that you would read this, and I would ask that you would sever your ties with Global Ties. And the reason is, it's an extreme left-wing organization that is not indicative of the Madison population. It states that building a community of practice to tangibly center equality and justice in our work is critical if we are to root out the legacies of white supremacy, racism, and hatred in all its forms within international exchange programming and reflect our country's rich diversity to the world. This is the same mission of Global Ties Alabama, and also the funding you are going toward, to put toward refugee resettlement program is tied to Global Ties U.S. and Global Ties throughout the world. While it may seem like a sliver or a drop in the bucket for funding, we're actually beginning a tie that could easily expand as they continue to ask for more and more money. Now, as a former minister, I know that I don't go to the government to ask for money for my good works, or for the good works of my church. The government has its own programs. I don't believe that the city of Madison should be in the business of refugee resettlement and spending taxpayer monies on refugee resettlements, even if it's something that sounds so kindly as daily commutes and supporting them getting to work. A church and individuals who want to become a part of that organization can easily dig into their pockets and drive their car to give these people help if need be, rather than this government, the Madison City Council, providing money for Global Ties. A book I read by a black man named John McCorder called Woke Racism says that this is, in effect, a religion in which the elect is not white-pigmented in their skin. So when you support D E I, you're supporting a whole block.
Thank you, Mr. Peters. And we have your submission, each council. Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the council? Please come forward. State your name and district.
Jennifer Coe, Ashley Estate, District 5, Council President. Okay, I'd like to speak to you today about Resolution 2024-16, Resolution authorizing a change order for professional services agreement with Baseline Sports Construction LLC, whereas unforeseeable repairs to the lighting system are now required to complete the project and are estimated to cost an additional $71,900 above the original contract price. Why is the mayor entering into a change order agreement? Don't we have insurance to cover this, or this kind of unforeseen or unexpected act of God? Resolution 2024-010, authorizing an agreement with ESO or subscription to historical data. Please have legal or human resources explain why the city of Madison is authorized to have a subscription to citizens' electronic health records, and who has the authorization to look at them? When an individual's records are accessed, is that patient notified? Okay, on Resolution 2024-03, Resolution to approve agreement with Get Real About Mental Illness for Agency Services Related to Their Annual Appropriation. Okay, it's for 2,500. That's not much, but I ask in all seriousness, is it a good idea to run mental health services through a third-party nonprofit? Their stated goals for this nonprofit include research, training, and crisis intervention. Who are the sponsors? And it says it's working towards the betterment of the community. What exactly is the public purpose for it, and who will be accountable for risks employees might be exposed to? Agreement with Global Ties, this is a Huntsville nonprofit. Please elaborate more about how the city of Madison will be furnishing transportation for refugees and families resettling here. And thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Coe. Is there anyone else who would like to address the council?
Good evening. John Cole, District 4, Mr. Shaw's district. I just want to begin by saying thank you to the city council, the mayor, and the city engineer, and Madison Police. One for the bridge, putting signs up, reflectors up. Thank you very much for that. Everybody in the community is very happy about that. Two, Madison PD, they still have cart blocks parked in my driveway if they want to. They have done so, and they have busted some people. So in fact, one on the 21st of December, my father-in-law from Savannah, him and his wife, him and my mother-in-law arrived. Thirty minutes after they arrived, right after they arrived, one of the police officers was there unmarked, I don't know who it was, we haven't talked with him, and not 20 minutes later, he peeled off and nailed somebody. So he told me that he was running radar, the average speed, some of the fast speeds was around 51 mile an hour on a 40 mile an hour road that needs to be dropped to 30. So thank you for that, for the safety mitigations there. I know they've been doing work out in front of my yard and the other yards around there adjacent to my property, marking everything out for the future. I just want to address something that was made, that was brought to my attention recently. It's about the Global Ties thing. As a U.S. Army retired Army officer, as a combat veteran in the Middle East, specifically the Iraq War, I have a concern. It talks about Global Ties Alabama promotes international relationships through citizen diplomacy and refugee resettlement. Somebody who's been to the Middle East three times, I'm just concerned refugee resettlement. I'd like to know the who, and the what, and the where. That's all my comments. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Cole.
Margie Daly, Collins District. Happy New Year, everybody. And I just wanted to reflect on some of the achievements of this council from '22 to '23. We got ramps for the stadium. The stadium got a second new net, updates in the locker room, soon to be more VIP party rooms, pickleball courts. We purchased every large acreage that was up for sale, commercial acreage, through personal loans and not reflected in our budget. We gave to many nonprofits. The nonprofits all have connections. Drainage and covert relocations for the new developments. We did wayfinding signs. We refinanced all the debt from 2011 till present. City Hall has expanded departments and hired many new hires, along with hired many consultants, hired a few no-show positions. We had a few grandiose galas for the employees and the VIPs and the MVP. Now, what did we, the people, get? We, the people, our public speaking time was removed. We no longer get our five minutes or extra time at the end. The roads are not safe. Some haven't been paved in 30 years. We need widening reflective signs. We need up-to-date traffic lights, ADA compliant with walk buttons, and kept in sync, as they used to be with the old engineer. He'd go out there and make sure those lights were in sync. We've removed the streetlights and replaced them with a $4 million loan from a company called Naresco for the cheapest, non-shielded, deemed not safe by the AMA LED curb lights that physically harm the eyesight of 45% of our population. The most harm is done to infants to 2 years old. We need sidewalks. Most of you guys campaigned on giving us sidewalks. We have not received one sidewalk on the city in this area, in the main area of the city. All the bridges need updating. Walton, you're gonna have a problem there, because they just did some work there, and it's an issue, so expect some MVAs. We did a lot of increasing in franchise fees, and we added many new vendors, added many new nonprofits. We refused tornado shelters, even though they're available to county.
Ms. Daly, you're out of time. You're out of time. Is there anyone else who would like to address the council? Please come forward.
Hi, I'm Jeffrey Johnson. I think I'm in District 4 on Whisperwood Lane. About two or three sessions ago, I believe a police chief was giving out bravery awards and so forth, and I gave out one to a policeman who was off duty and stopped to help somebody. But there was a story in there about some mentally ill person out on County Line Road that ended up getting run over and killed. So I can see how police could use training and fire department and EMTs, they could use actual professional certified people in mental illness handling training. But for this $2,500 appropriation, the 2024-003-R, in general, I don't think a city council of any city ought to be giving away money to any specific charities, but I can understand for training purposes, and, you know, I could understand that. And also, ditto for the Global Ties thing. I mean, that's not why people pay their tax dollars, especially to a city organization or government. It's not for them to pick and choose their pet charities or whatever. And then the last one, that was about 2024-004-R. And the last one, I've been coming to these things since March, and this $72,000 thing for the pickleball lighting, that pushes it over to a quarter of a million bucks, I've seen, being used for pickleball since I've been coming to these things. I mean, is, when is it gonna end? I mean, is it, is, is that in, you know, is there a secret pickleball society I'm not a member of or something? I don't know what's going on with the pickleball, but anyway, there's uses, good uses of tax money and bad uses, and I think the three things I just mentioned are probably bad uses. So unless people can justify these, I would, I hope all of you vote no on them, and not just one person voting no as a token. But anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Anyone else like to address the council? And seeing none, we will close public comments and move to the consent agenda and finance committee report.
Yes. The Finance Committee has reviewed the regular and periodic bills. Also, on the consent agenda is agreement with, I'm not gonna say it right, the Rubber Company, to do emergency police training. We've got disposition of some unused property, appropriations for Get Real About Mental Illness, and for Global Ties. We've got an ESO subscription for historical data, the pickleball lighting. We've got an ESO subscription for historical data, the pickleball lighting, and we also have received several donations from L. Tucker, J. Caldwell, St. John's Baptist Church, all for the senior center, and an anonymous donation for the rec department. And I move to approve.
Okay, motion and second. And mayor, did you have some updates with some of these items?
I do. So let's start with the lighting. The pickleball court lights are in great shape. What isn't in great shape is the lighting that has for the two baseball, softball, multi-use fields. And when we received the bid for those, there was no way they could understand what was already in the ground that would conduit from the lights to the actual electrical panels, of which they found they were obliterated by multiple lightning hits. So once they started getting into that, they found out what they needed to get done, they priced it out. So that change order is simply to continue, it's not for pickleball, pickleball was taken care of, it's for the additional fields that help with our adult programs for softball, baseball, and multiple other things. When it comes to global ties, I certainly would understand if we were headed where a lot of people have us with concern, if that was going for refugees that were illegal aliens that would make us some sort of sanctuary city. The good news is that is not what this does. First, when you hear refugees, if there was any that we would be, that global ties would be supporting, they would be Ukrainian refugees that would be in this area to relocate from what they have. And they actually are called parolees as they are headed back to Ukraine when they can get back to Ukraine. But where this actual $2,500 would be used by global ties is to support two primary things. One is they are a strong facilitator for the Japanese families that come into our area for Mazda and Toyota. So a lot of folks relocate for one, two, and three years from that area to manage those two and other Japanese and Korean entities. When they come in, while sometimes the folks who work for those organizations are strong and bilingual, many are not. And so where they help with that is rides to places they need to be, connecting them with support mechanisms that help them acclimate to our city, as many of them are living here right now while they're on the stint. Sometimes it's to take them to get their driver's license, and I say that to go to lessons to get their driver's license. So that is one of the things that this helps our community do, because most of the, and I said most, that's not fair, many of the folks who are coming over in the management area for Mazda, Toyota, and others are living in the city of Madison. If you remember, there's over 70 languages spoken in our schools, so it's also a group that helps us connect people of need with support mechanisms there. The second part is the liaison for foreign groups. And a lot of times, it's exchange students that are coming in. It's folks that will come in, I probably brought in five or six groups that met with either me, myself, and economic development. They're coming in to learn, to understand what we do, and to also share information, and they facilitate those. There was no one that came in from the Middle East, from those areas. Most of them were European or coming in from, again, there was one Ukrainian group that came in. So that would be that appropriation and also the appropriation for the lighting.
Okay, can we reword the resolution, correct the resolution 16 that said it's softball and baseball instead of pickleball specifically?
Or is the change order actually for the original pickleball lighting agreement? I'm not sure what the original wording was, so is that why it's worded the way it is?
For the overall agreement of the lighting, but this is, the lighting for pickleball is already there, the lighting for the...
Is it same contract?
Contract, yeah.
But you're trying to include and add?
The pickleball is taken care of, this is on the same contract, but on the other side, where they have to now take care of that side.
The change order is to add lighting for softball and baseball?
Correct.
So can we reword the resolution so that it reads that way?
Sure. Do you need to amend anything, or can you just do it?
We can just make a motion to change.
We can. As far as, we can make a motion to change it, and yes, this was basically for a contract that already exists, and this was a change order to it, so we can do it by motion.
I make a motion to change the word pickleball to softball slash baseball. Is that okay?
Second.
Clicker on the podium. On the PowerPoint. I need the clicker. It's coming next, I'm sorry.
Okay, sorry. Okay, so we're doing a change order on something that originally didn't have this purpose, or did the contract originally have the purpose?
It was a part of the purpose, but the shorthand description of it was pickleball, I guess, originally, but it just wasn't expansive enough in the description of the items. So yes, that was part of the purpose for the original. But once there was a determination, as understood from the mayor, they determined there's these hidden problems with the lightning strikes. So yes, it was part of the purpose of the original contract.
Okay, so you can do a change order if it's part of the original purpose? That's what I'm getting at?
Yes.
Okay, okay. So this happened because there are multiple lightning strikes? Or was it one lightning strike that took out the whole system? What exactly happened?
I don't think I can answer that, and it also occurred before we took over. So an example, or a question somebody asked is, well, couldn't we turn this over to insurance? No, because we didn't own it at the time. Had it happened now, with pickleball, we could turn it over and have it possibly with insurance picking up on it. But it's something that you won't find until you get up under there to understand what's there. And whether it was one or multiple, it is unoperable to be able to utilize, and that's in addition to make it work.
So it was a pre-existing problem?
Yeah, well, yes. It was. But one you couldn't have known until you actually got into the actual system to figure that out.
What is the dollar value of the original?
I don't have the exact figure here in front of me, but I believe that it was about a little over $100,000 with the mayor, do you recall?
It's more than that for this lighting.
$110,000, something like that.
Right. Yeah, about $300,000, if I'm not mistaken.
It was that much, I'm sorry.
I think it was much bigger.
It's, I mean, honestly, Karen, it's just like, if somebody comes out to do your roof, you know, and they say, hey, I'm going to do your roof for $10,000, and they've looked at your roof, when they get on your roof and realize that your plywood is broken or your rafter is broken, they can put the roof on there, but it's going to fail. So what they do is they add, they would add a price for, hey, we need to replace this plywood, and we need to replace this rafter. You'd go ahead and pay that before you get the roof. So probably what happened is when, probably what happened is when that lightning got, when it got struck, you know, it strikes a light, and it runs down through the line, and it burns that line up. It'll be underground, you wouldn't know.
So like, we're working at the time?
I don't know if that's the case.
I'm trying to understand the situation.
Lights have not been working for years.
They haven't worked for years?
I practiced up there by the time, they just, they haven't been working for years. But we bought it, I mean, yeah.
Bought it without knowing.
Well, I mean...
They weren't working.
It is a buyer beware state.
Okay, any other discussion on any other items besides this amendment to the pickleball field lighting to reflect that it is softball, baseball field lighting? Do we have any other?
I still have concerns on the global ties.
Okay, okay, we're saying this, but in our exhibit, it says it's for the transportation of two refugees. So either we change what the exhibit A said to reflect what you were saying, or we move it off until it's changed, because right now, we are agreeing to spend the money on what exhibit A says.
Whatever you want to do.
I'm going to make a change. I'm going to make a motion to approve the minutes, or I'm sorry, the resolutions with the change of changing the global thing to what Paul stated here. I think you've got four points.
I have three.
Three points?
Yes.
Can you state those points for us, please?
Well, it's facilitate, primarily facilitate support for the Japanese and Korean families that come to this area, for the major businesses that are just outside of Madison for the most part, but the residents live here. They're also a liaison for other groups from other nationalities. And then lastly, a liaison to foreign groups who come in on the exchange program that is also on their website, that if they would have wanted to find that, they could have found that too.
Okay, you guys got that?
I mean, it's only $2,500. That was a lot of things that you mentioned.
Well, I think the original request was for a larger amount.
Yeah, the original was for $10,000. This is for 25, yeah, so we just...
Recommended 25.
Recommended 25.
It's been approved in the budget already.
And so, I didn't know if it, but is the 2,500, since it was cut, since the original request was cut to 2,500, is that being used for transportation? Is that...
So here's, I think, what they did. This was the, if there was going to be any type of transportation for the refugees, it was the new portion because the possibility of Ukrainians coming in on top of what they've already done. So I think what they did is highlight that to show what else that they would do in addition to what they had done. So that's why I think that was spotlighted or highlighted in their mind. But again, what they've done for us and what they continue to do for this overall area is the three things that I've mentioned.
Okay, but is there anything wrong with the agreement in terms of what the purpose is that they would use the funds for?
Not for those.
Does it exist?
Yeah, we just, yes.
Okay, because I know we're not the only ones contributing to global ties, and we have a population in Huntsville that's...
Yeah.
Okay.
So there's no, there's no problem with changing it to those specific wordings, and that's what our money would be used for, is to support those three things.
Right.
Okay, so we're going to, all right, so currently, we have a motion and a second pending on the consent agenda.
On the, and then the other?
But now we need to vote on amendments to the resolutions for the consent agenda before we can...
Do you want to vote on, okay?
Yeah, so the first amendment that I think was suggested was the rewording of the pickleball field lighting into softball, baseball. So I need a motion and a second to amend that resolution, number 2024-16R. I made it, and Connie seconded it. For the overall consent agenda.
No, I just did it for pickleball.
Oh, you just did that one just for pickleball, okay.
I can all on one, on those two.
Okay, so let's vote now on the...
Can we do both resolutions in one vote?
I think it's better to separate.
I think it's better to separate the amendments. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. We're going to vote on amending the description of the resolution number 2024-16R, pickleball field lighting to softball, baseball field lighting.
And I have Councilmember Robleski and second by Councilmember Spears.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Robleski.
Aye.
Councilmember Spears.
Aye.
Council President Bartlet.
Aye.
Councilmember Powell.
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw. Councilmember Denzine. Councilmember Seaford.
Aye.
And that amendment passes. Next, we want an amendment to the agreement to global ties to reflect the three purposes that Mayor Finley outlined that the funds could be used for, which was transportation, translation...
Translation, translation, and liaison.
And liaison services. Do we have a motion and a second to amend?
Second, go ahead.
Powell motion, second by Spears. Let's have a vote on that amendment. Councilmember Powell.
Aye.
Councilmember Spears.
Aye.
Council President Bartlet.
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski.
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw. Councilmember Denzine.
Aye.
Councilmember Seaford.
Aye.
And that amendment passes. Now, with these corrections, are we ready to vote on the consent agenda? We already have a motion and a second on the consent agenda. Let's take that vote. Councilmember Spears.
Aye.
Councilmember Powell.
Aye.
Council President Bartlet.
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski.
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw. Councilmember Denzine.
Aye.
Councilmember Seaford.
Aye.
And the motion passes unanimously. Thank you all for correcting and amending the resolutions. Next is presentation of reports, starting with Mayor Finley.
All right, and I will do a better job of trying to get those more specific, or as my buddy used to say, more Pacific. Before I get into Civic Awareness Academy that we want to present tonight to you guys, and then hopefully move forward with your nods of approval, I want to go back to what Mr. Cole was talking about with radar. I thought it was pretty interesting. We got a message from someone who had been within city government, understood kind of how the system went, and said, look, school's getting a start again. I live on a road that's kind of a cut through in one of the neighborhoods. Got to go in a little fast last time. When you get a chance, would you mind putting up one of those boards just to kind of remind people how fast they're going? And tell you that the first day of school, I'm one of those people that uses that cut through road. So I didn't, hadn't even thought, hadn't even thought about it. Hadn't been a couple weeks since it even came. I turned the corner, and I do understand it's probably about 30 degrees outside. Go down the street, I look up and I see that board, you know, it's got 25 up there, and so I'm very happy that when I went by it, I was going 23. As I got to the board, I just happened to look over, and behind a tree was a gentleman sitting in full camo gear with a table documenting every one of the people that came by and marking that down. So I love our community and the fact that they, in turn, thank you, chief, for what you guys do to continue to listen to us and use the assets that we have to try to slow folks down through these neighborhoods, because it is important that we continue to look to do that. But I do want to go forward here with what we've put together. Tracy Gillespie came on, and one of the things that we first talked about was how. How can we do a better job for our community by educating and listening to them, and in this case, inspiring positive change in Madison through community engagement and involvement? And so what we did is we, Tracy went to meet with a couple of folks, she did some homework through other municipalities, and we've put together something that we're very proud of, which we're going to move forward if, again, we get some nods with our Civic Awareness Academy. It'll have a mission to improve community transparency, trust, and participation by, and I'm going to read these bullets, making city government better understood and more accessible, introducing participants to city leaders and department heads, encouraging residents to become more involved by serving on committees and volunteering, showcasing how the city is enhancing quality of life and is responsive to citizens, and creating meaningful two-way discussions and conversations. And one of the examples I would give here is we've had several citizens tonight ask for information. I had a couple people that trust us pretty emphatically because they trust us, who called me and said, hey, I don't understand global ties. Give me some information, if you would, please. And they didn't read it on Nextdoor and have some conspiracy theory that went out there that had us, you know, turning into a sanctuary city. They had actually taken the time, and so we want this to be something that we continue twice a year to build trust. What we do is, well, you must be a Madison resident, 18 years old. There will be six different classes that we'll have, and we've asked that you make five to graduate, and the biggest goal is to have a desire to increase personal commitment, or community involvement. It's offered twice per year, hopefully in March and October. Applicants will be accepted starting six weeks prior to the start of the session. Each session will last about two and a half hours. The city department heads will be part of the panelists, and class sizes will be limited to 30 students. Just giving you an idea of what we initially see happening in the first session, how city government works. We want our budget to be fully open and accessible to anybody who's in this class, where the mayor can explain how we put it together, the council can explain what they do to move it forward, and then we and the finance chair manage that. So all those folks would be available in that respective session. And what we see each one of these being is a presentation, but then also some roundtable discussions where each, several of the members would be at different tables, people can rotate through, and it's a one-on-one discussion on listening, but also giving and passing along information. The next one is critical, it's our city is protected. It's our police chief, our fire chief, and in turn, their respective teams, how do we keep us safe? Next, how do we maintain our city? That's our public works, our engineering, our building and facilities departments, and how do they work? How do they make decisions? Why is drainage so critical in some instances? How do we prioritize roads? How do we know which neighborhood roads are first, second, and third as far as being paved, and why? Next would be our city is growing. That's planning, economic development, and in turn, how and zoning, and some of the things that happen to in turn continue to drive our city forward. We also want to play and come here and enjoy quality of life with our parks and recreation, and why is the pickleball so critical for us to prioritize? And why do we continue, and we do, continue to add sidewalks and continue to add greenways and the things that need to be done to help connect the city? So, and then lastly, our city is leading. You know, one of the things that Lisa and her team do out of the city clerk's office is manage our different boards and committees, and we want those to be staffed. We want them to be staffed with people who are excited to continue to make a difference in our city, and so this would help us accomplish that. Other details, and be free to participate. The graduates of the program will hopefully earn a certificate of civic leadership and recognized at a city council meeting. Applicants will be open, applications will be open if you guys just give us a nod by the next... by the next city council meeting or even at that city council meeting with a start date sometime in March. Graduation sometime in May. I think one of the neat things that will come out of this too, just like we have in Leadership Huntsville, is we'll start and form an alumni group. Some of the folks that in turn can get together on a quarterly basis, continue to discuss, talk, and share what they've learned, what they've heard. It's how this group is successful in continuing to drive the city forward. So with that said, I'll be quiet for a minute. Tracy obviously lead that from the economic and external affairs side and she'll be the one managing most of this for us.
Would you be able to send us this PowerPoint so we can share it with our constituents, please?
I, I can't, yeah, we just wanted to make sure, the answer is absolutely.
Yeah.
And we would promote it with everything we have with social media, with our website. Hopefully, you know, we get media involved because we would love to see each of those classes with the full thirty people in there to be able to do that. Again, we, you know, we'll, we'll work with businesses that are within the city of Madison and Madison Chamber members to help make sure they have some food and stay nourished. So yes, we can get that to you.
Great, thank you.
Hey, any other questions? Is there gonna be any kind of selection process if we do meet the thirty? Which would be great, but.
Yeah, well, first off, I think first of all, we have the ability to say no to anybody we want to if we decided we wanted to. Is there a selection process? Absolutely. And, you know, we would continue to work to make sure as many folks as we can get through and if we needed to add classes, we could.
What would the no be based on?
Uh, there's a lot of things that might be a no. How about we start there? Our goal, let's go back, make sure that we start to make sure when you ask that question. You know, we want people who are looking, we're trying to inspire positive change in Madison through community engagement and involvement. And we want creative, creating meaningful two-way discussions and conversations and folks that are looking to improve our community and continue to work hard from a transparency standpoint and a trust standpoint.
I guess I would like to see it first come, first served.
Yeah, that's, I appreciate that. It's a thought.
It's fair.
How long are the classes?
I mean, classes would be about two and a half hours each evening. We'd have, there's about eight total. There'd be kind of an orientation class that would be about an hour and then six classes, it would be about two and a half hours. And then at the end, there'd be a graduation and we see that as just coming up here and working folks through fairly quickly to respect the council's time at a council meeting. But we'd want those folks to be recognized.
During the day, during the evenings, when?
Uh, most likely at night, I'm sorry, it's probably starting at five-thirty and ending about eight.
Okay.
And trying to pick a night that, you know, kind of, you're not gonna, there's no way. That's why we kind of give them five out of six classes. Not everybody can make every class, but we want them to kind of make it through those if we can. If the class turned around and decided there was a better time to meet, we would look to do that. But again, with trying to bring department heads in, we need to kind of get ahead of the game and make sure it's defined where people know what it is.
I guess that's kind of the question about, you know, do our department heads come in? What time is that and, you know?
Sure.
You don't want to have much overtime.
Sure, and then, and then what we'll try to do each, well, the department heads aren't overtime, but I think in this case, well, we would also make sure.
You don't want to overwork them then.
Well, we do want them to be able to be in a position where they can meet folks and talk to folks.
Right.
And we also would have council members at each one of those meetings, you know, a couple of you guys at each one of the tables where they could just rotate through, meet you guys and talk to you guys. We'd start off probably with president and finance chair at the first meeting and then just continue to rotate through you there.
One positive I can think of right off the bat is helping to fill some of our vacant slots. Like I know McDabb has three or four vacant slots. I've been trying to help fill them and getting people engaged in helping to fill those slots that we need so desperately. They've not been able to have a quorum in months. So, you know, just, this is a great way for them to get their foot in the door, kind of learn a little bit about how the city works and then they can go on to continue to volunteer their time.
Correct.
I think the program's great, but I don't really like the fact that somebody's gonna be going, yes, you can and no, you can't.
I appreciate that.
Okay, anything else from the mayor on your section's report?
I, I don't have any, well, I do, I have two more things. Do I have, I just, I want to make sure everybody's okay to move forward and I've heard you loud and clear, Karen. Um, second thing, I have three things, I guess. We also had a discussion on the Limestone County voting issue. Um, we, you know, obviously the land of God is too small. So I wanted to let council and others know that we are, have a meeting with our schools on Thursday. Lisa will be going to that with me. And we're gonna be able to talk to them and see what we can possibly do to find more room for the Limestone County side. And then lastly, one of the neat things and I really appreciate Chief Bailey is Wednesday at two o'clock, Kids to Love will be formally opening up the Safe Haven Baby Box here at Fire Station One. And Kids to Love had ten different areas, ten different areas that they could do that in. And since they're our hometown, Chief Bailey immediately said yes. And we stepped up and we'll be moving that forward. And I appreciate you, Chief, and all your team for that. It's a neat thing and we'll be having that ribbon cutting Station One at two o'clock on Wednesday. With that said, that's all I have.
Hey, thank you, Mayor, District One.
Um, just happy New Year, everyone. And to mark your calendar, please, for our annual event of Ready Fest, Steve Perry, I think, is with us today. There he is in the back. He is leading the charge again. That date is February twenty-fourth. It'll be Discovery Middle School, nine AM to one PM. Still working on a lot of vendors and people to be there, but it's just a great way to be prepared mentally, physically, spiritually with any type of possible disaster that might affect your family or the community. So again, Saturday, February twenty-fourth, Discovery Middle School. And Steve will be sharing information at our next couple of meetings with more details about that. And that's all I have.
Thank you, District Two.
Yeah, I was gonna talk about the baby box, but I guess I won't since you've already done that, but.
You said it's the first one in state, you could say.
It is the first one in state.
I was gonna say that.
Well, sorry. You didn't have everything. But I'm very excited that we do have a baby box and it gives our people that are unfortunately in a really hard situation, another option. And I'm very grateful that we have a fire department that is willing to take care of that. And we send everybody a happy New Year.
That's all. District Three.
Well, I normally don't start out this way, but I will. I'm gonna tell you that I was wrong. There were a couple of years ago that the ladies on council here went to a, I don't know what event it was, but basically it was about this huge Christmas ball.
Well, that's not where they went, but that's where they came back.
Well, I don't know if they went there, but they came back with that. And I, what is it, was it an ornament, I guess?
An ornament, yeah.
It's an ornament. And, and, you know, we had, I think, we paid fifteen thousand dollars for this thing. It came out of council projects and I voted yeah for it because I didn't want to be a Scrooge. But I just have to tell you, thank you. I was wrong, you were right, and that, that thing turned out to be wonderful. At some point, I heard that it was like the number one thing in North Alabama.
Instagram.
Instagrammable thing, so naturally, you know, I'm on Instagram. So, anybody knows me, I'll do social media well. So I want to thank you, thank you guys for that. And Christmas was awesome. We did, I was there and we did throw chickens off of there and I never realized how much joy, really adults, got out of a flying chicken. The kids, I mean, some of the kids got pushed down. I mean, it was pretty interesting, but just a wonderful event. Thank you for, for all you guys that were involved in that. Parks and Rec did a great job, always do, and I thank them for that. And then the Christmas parade, thank the two chiefs for that. I've always and always will say I wanted to be downtown, but just thank you for letting us even have one, right? I mean, what an, what an awesome event to have families out and have a community that's, that's what we have, is have families. So I want to thank all you guys for that. And my wife's gonna be happy that I was able to say that I was not right. I'm not saying I was wrong, I just wasn't right on that. But other than that, that's all I've got.
I just hope they have this down for the minute.
I wrote it down, I might, I wrote it down.
You're all gonna be.
Listen, I thought I was wrong one time, but I was right about that.
Thank you, Teddy, District Six.
I just want to wish everybody a very happy twenty twenty-four. I'm looking forward to all the new things that we will be doing with the city. I hope everyone will be more involved and start participating more. It all helps everyone when everyone is working together. And that's all I have, thank you.
Hey, District Seven?
No new business.
Hey, I just have one announcement. We're gonna be gearing up with work sessions again in the new year. And our next work session is scheduled for January twenty-fourth here in council chambers. We'll be getting a lot of updates and publishing that agenda if it hasn't already been published today. It went out today, very good. And then I want to thank BSA Troop four oh four for inviting me to visit with them Sunday evening. It's a troop of girls, a boy scout troop full of girls. And they had so many questions, just outstanding questions about city government and the school system. And so it was great getting to visit with them and keeping connected with some of our younger citizens and that's always exciting. And that's all I have. And next, we're gonna look at board and committee appointments. And we have one appointment for the municipal cemeteries committee.
Yes, ma'am, that's me. I would like to recommend appointment of Mike Potter to place seven. It's currently a vacated place to the municipal cemetery committee with a term expiration of January ninth, twenty twenty-eight.
Okay, and are there any other nominations for this position? Seeing done, we will appoint Mike Potter by acclamation.
Thank you.
Okay, next, public hearings. We have one public hearing for resolution number twenty twenty-four dash oh oh five R.
Good evening. Uh, the revenue department has one item for a public hearing this evening. Resolution number twenty twenty-four dash zero zero five dash R. This is a request from Madison Crossing LLC doing business of Monarch Grove Madison for a special retail, more than thirty days alcohol license for their location at eleven twenty-six zero County Nine Road. The reason that this business is applying for an alcohol license at this time is that they want to add alcohol items for sales to the residents. Everything is in order for deciding to be considered.
Okay, is there anyone from Monarch Grove here?
I don't believe so, I didn't get any confirmation.
No. If there were any questions, we would have someone here. All right, we're going to open public hearing on the retail liquor license. And everyone has five minutes to speak at the public hearing. Please state your name and your district.
Margie Daly, County District. Okay, so this is on county line. I guess she gave the address, I better put on my glasses. Uh, eleven two sixty. Is this on the, um?
Right next to James Clemens.
And on the same side of the street or opposite?
Same side.
Same side, okay, I'm confusing it with another one. There's another one across the street. Okay, so it's the one by James Clemens. And it's a retirement community?
Senior independent living.
What is it?
Independent living.
They also have a memory.
Oh, independent.
Memory.
And memory care for senior citizens.
Do they have transportation?
They do.
Some of them do.
Well, we're not gonna give them alcohol, let them drive, right?
No.
I'm kidding, I'm kidding, I do joke. Anyway, so, um, well, I think it's good. They want to have a few cocktails, why not, right? So are you gonna sell bottles there and have maybe a little bar? Or is it just like you sell bottles?
Now, that, I, you know.
Can you come to the microphone, I'm sorry?
Well, I'll tell you what, let's hold, hold off just one second. Do you have any other questions? Because we're gonna let the public hearing part close and then we'll answer all your questions.
Yeah, I'm fine, I, I've just.
Okay, all right, okay, okay, hold, hold tight. Are there any other questions or anyone else who has anything to say about the public hearing? Okay, we're gonna close public hearings, come on up. And let us know what your plans are.
So we, they usually buy their own bottles, so they do have access to alcohol regardless. This is not really stopping or starting anything, they do it anyway. So basically, we do have a pub there in our senior living community. It is luxury senior living. And so it has a pub and we would have like cocktail hours. So the idea is there's a pub that has a bistro where you could go down when you're not having regular meals or you want something light and you can get a glass of wine or, and typically, we're looking at this around lunchtime so they're not like partying all night or anything like that. So just like you would if you went out to lunch or early dinner where you have a cocktail or something like that. And we do give that to them already. It's just this would be if they want to purchase something in addition to that and they could purchase that cocktail. And there, it will be limits around that, so we can give them two cocktails, but they won't exceed that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Okay, so do I have a motion and a second?
Um, make a motion to approve.
Second. Okay, motion second, any other questions for Yvonne?
I would like to sign up now. My question is, you're asking for a temporary license. Is there a reason we're not just gonna give them annual license like we do restaurants?
More than thirty days would allow them to hover for longer than that.
Okay, okay.
It's not temporary.
Right, so.
It will be up to a year.
Oh, is it, okay, so it's a, it's a normal license?
Yeah.
Okay, I was a little bit confused by the terminology, okay.
The reason with the terminology is because these will allow them to take them to their unit or.
Their room, okay, very good, thank you.
Okay, without a green cup. Okay, are we ready for a vote? All right, let's vote. Councilmember Robleski.
Aye.
Councilmember Spears.
Aye.
Council President Bartlett.
Aye.
Councilmember Powell.
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw. Councilmember Denzine. Councilmember Seaford.
Aye.
And the motion passes, congratulations, Monarch Grove.
Thank you.
Thank you, Yvonne. All right, next, department reports, beginning with court. And Mr. Gilgore has that.
Good evening, uh, court asked me to present this to you tonight. There's resolution number twenty twenty-four dash zero twelve dash R. This is a resolution authorizing renewal of an agreement with Madison County for the housing of inmates for twenty twenty-four. These are being renewed on the same terms that we have, just to carry it over for the new year.
Okay, and a motion second?
Move to approve.
Okay. Okay, motion by Robleski, second by Denzine. Any questions to renew the same terms, ready for vote? Okay. Councilmember Robleski.
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine.
Aye.
Council, Council President Bartlett.
Aye.
Councilmember Spears.
Aye.
Councilmember Powell.
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw. Councilmember Seaford.
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you, Mr. Gilgore. Next, engineering.
All right, first I have the annual report and presentation on the rebuilt Alabama gas tax fund. This is kind of a report just for FY twenty twenty-three. So all the numbers that you are gonna see on this presentation are for FY twenty twenty-three. So the first is, this is our budgeted funds by each of these different sources. So we've got the different, the two, four, five, and seven cent gas tax. We budgeted at the beginning of FY twenty twenty-three, one point three eight million dollars for the various uses for those revenue sources. You could see them there for Boeing road repairs. Road repairs in that case is like potholes or trench failures for the utilities, that kind of a thing. Signs are for very street signs that get added, for example, like at Browns Ferry at the bridge where we added some signs there, that's where that comes from. The signals is for maintenance of signals or new equipment for existing signals. This is not for new signals at, where there aren't already, you know, that existing in those, in those locations. And then the utilities to pay for the street lights is that last one. It's basically the power bill for the street lights. And then there's the twenty nineteen gas tax. And the project that we chose last year was the Sullivan Road Reservicing and we budgeted that one for two hundred seventy-five thousand dollars. dollars. This is the collected revenue for those sources. Got these numbers directly off the budget document for this past year, so you can kind of see what those, those are. And that's, they're all actually really, really close to the previous year. I think it's an increase of about half a percent or something like that from the previous year. So our income there was a little over one point nine million dollars. And then finally, the expenditures for the different sources, as you go through the same list as from the first slide, where we budgeted the biggest differences from, between what we budgeted and what we expended for the year. We paid them in November, so it'll show up when I do this presentation next year. So you'll have that one hundred and nineteen thousand dollars for that project and then whatever we end up using the money for this year. And that's, that's it for the report. Do you guys have any questions? Those items?
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Next is resolution number 2024-009-R. This is awarding a bid number 2023-012-ITB, tree removal services to Tree Works LLC in the amount of twenty-three thousand eight hundred ninety-seven dollars to be paid from the engineering department budget. This is tree removal for the, for the bridge project, the culvert replacement project on Brown's Ferry.
Excuse me, it says thirty-three.
Yes, thirty-three thousand eight hundred ninety-seven.
Oh, I thought.
Not sure exactly what number I said.
Sorry. Okay.
It's thirty-three. Thirty-three is correct.
Okay.
In spite of whatever I said.
Okay. Motion by Powell, second by Spears. Any questions? Ready for vote?
I did. I was just wondering exactly what the scope was. It just said trees and stumps along Brown's Ferry. So what exactly are you doing?
So we're widening that culvert there on Brown's Ferry Road. Mr. Cole has brought that before you guys several times when we started that kind of project last year or so. Got the project done, the design's complete. We're widening it, and where we're widening it to, we've got to relocate some utilities, and so we've got to remove some trees on the property that we acquired for ride of waste. So there's about a half an acre or so over there that's being cleared, and in some of those areas, the roots have to be removed so that the utilities can go in that location. So there's a mark out there, there's an outline for the trees that are removed, and there's also another outline for the alignment, for the root balls have to be removed.
Okay, thank you. You had the paperwork, there wasn't any indication of what the scope was, so I did want to ask.
Okay.
Yeah, I was quite amazed at the range of bids that came back, between thirty-three thousand and a hundred and thirty thousand?
Yeah.
Interesting. That's all.
I'm glad that we got two that were in this ballpark.
Yeah.
We got, we got two, so we're comfortable with it, and we'll, we'll see how that goes.
Okay, ready for vote? Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Council President Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw? Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
Motion passes.
All right, next I have resolution number 2024-014-R, authorizing an amendment to the professional services agreement with Barge Design Solutions for construction, engineering, and inspection services on Project 19047, Wall Trana Highway from Graphics Drive to I-565. This is the atrit project in the amount not to exceed fourteen thousand three forty-seven ninety-five, ninety-five cents to be paid from the engineering department budget.
Move to approve.
Second. Okay, motion second, Spears. Any questions? Okay, ready for vote? Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Council President Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw? Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
Motion passes.
And finally, I have proposed ordinance number 2024-015. This is an amendment to the city's flood ordinance, the first reading.
Okay. We're not going to.
No action, just if you guys have any questions or anything like that, some of the changes. Okay.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Fire.
Look who woke up from the back. Now, that you, chief.
Good evening.